of the solution. So let me just tell you a little bit about us. In 2019, we started as a grassroots effort, basically, of family members. So just in case you think I'm incredibly altruistic or whatever, it's actually not that. I'm a bit of a mom on a mission because I have a son who is going to turn 21 and he's in his last year of the public school system this year. And I want him to have a worthwhile daily activity. I want him and all the other people that are like him to just really enjoy the things that come from a life of work and social interaction. We were actually making some pretty good headway and we're planning a summer pilot, which was going to be sort of like a day camp type of thing for the summer of 2020. I know you know where I'm going with this, but in the spring, in the spring of 2020, you know, we all had to stay home. So we did get stalled by the pandemic. It's not a good time to start a nonprofit in the middle of a pandemic, asking people for money, asking people to volunteer. So we paused. But this fall, we're sort of, we are back on course. And let me just tell you, there's a slide there that says Cody Partners activities. But let me tell you what we've been doing this fall. We had a group together that prepared and served a seated Italian dinner for 20. We did that at Heritage Bakery in its after hours. And we did that because we have an enterprise that we are just beginning, which is to provide, to prepare and provide to-go dinners for our community. There are several other people in town who do that. And there's HelloFresh and Blue Apron, all that. There is a need for that sort of thing. People want an easy dinner, you know, and our model is basically sort of soup salad and dessert type thing. In fact, tomorrow, we have about 25 people who will pick up their chili cornbread salad and a brownie. So that was our, that's our very first time to do that. And we also are planning other activities in our future. One of the things we want to work on is probably in the new year is making and selling pep snacks. And we decided to do this because we want to be a nonprofit that, in addition to meeting the goals that I shared with you in our vision and mission, we want to have an earned income to help make our nonprofit, not just be completely dependent on sponsorships or donations that, I mean, this is, this is really a part of what we do. We are going to take any money that we make from our, our earned income endeavors and they go back into the organization. Obviously, that's what a nonprofit is. But especially to provide some of those social activities. And in mid-November, we have something called Autumn Art Afternoon and we're going to have three different crafts that people will make. It's just kind of a fun time to interact with each other, to make these crafts. And then we plan to sell some of our crafts at the Powell Craft Show coming up. We have a person who has a table who's generously allowed us some space there. So that's another way that our nonprofit is going to be earning income. And I have to say here, a tiny little advertisement, if you will, is that the things that we've been able to do so far have been because of generous community collaborators. When someone lets you come into their restaurant and, and make meals and, you know, at no benefit to themselves, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty big deal. So the specifics about why we're actually here and the library space we see as would be so terrific for Cody Partners. It would provide us a home base, which really provides so much credibility and just makes collaborating and organizing so much easier. We see that as a place where we could start small and grow. And what I, I'm not originally from Cody, but what I've seen in living here is what a generous community this is. And I really think that we would get a ton of community support if we had adults with disabilities and volunteers staffing this restaurant space in the library. In addition, I mentioned that it helps to facilitate collaborations. I think we could collaborate with the transition program at the school and with different schools within Northwest College, think social work and special ed and so forth. It would just be a place where we could work together. I think it would really be a great opportunity. You know, the, the specific logistics of it is that it's a really large workspace. And Mr. Garza shared with me that it's really ours to use as we, you know, sort of see fit. So it would be a great place even to work on some of these hand crafts that we would then be selling and so forth. And the kitchen is amazing. It's big and it has great storage. And there would be so many things that it's just like nine steps up from where we would be if we started somewhere else with just a basic commercial kitchen. The other thing is I know that other restaurants have maybe not been so thrilled with the hours. We love the hours. You know, I, I think this would be great for, for a nonprofit. So all of that. But I know that your job is not just to do what's right for Cody Partners or what would be good for Cody Partners. Your job is to do what's right for the Park County and for, and for Cody. And I honestly think this would be terrific for Cody. Of course, you probably know I believe that, but it would be, it would provide a service. That building doesn't really have any place for the people who are working there now. It would be nice to be able to be in the library and go grab a coffee or a snack or whatever. And it would help to expand our workforce. You know, my, my true hope is that there would be, be people who would come through, work there and would be adequately trained then to go and work in other restaurants within our community. Not everybody would be able to do that of the people who would be working here, but certainly some would. And probably most importantly, it would really show what our community values, that we value everybody, no matter what their ability is. I believe that about Cody and I think that it would make this group of people more visible. So our proposal for that space is actually to start pretty small. Whoa, is that my time? Oh, to start. They asked me how long I would need. I thought I could play for an hour. We would start small with just snacks and drinks and kind of to-go things as well, where people could do a sort of a grab it though. We do like homemade goodies, but we do some healthy things, you know, hummus and pita and veggies and dip and, you know, those kinds of trail mix and whatnot, things that I know that our group could do today, you know. And as we grow, we would hopefully expand the menu. We would, there, I don't know if you already know this, but there is a cappuccino machine there even. So we'd have to get training on that, but, you know, we, we'd be able to provide, you know, coffees and the like. We would have our adults with disabilities working side by side with volunteers. There's, there would be no compromise in health regulations and standards and whatnot. I mean, that would not be tolerable. But what we would do that might be different than other places is we focus on, well, what can this person do? And where can we find the, the perfect job out of what we're doing for this person? We don't focus on what they can't do. We focus on what they can do. And I honestly believe that everybody can work. Now, the commissioners have previously seen that restaurant space as an incubator. And as I told Mr. Garza when we were meeting with her, we're definitely a baby in need of that incubator. I think that we could grow faster, you know, to, to continue the metaphor and actually better if, if we were in that place. So what we're really asking is to have you help us prove this concept. And that would, here's the specifics, you know, okay, like what's it going to cost, right? The bottom line is that we can't pay a high rent and we can't sign a long lease because that would just, you know, be irresponsible for us at the, at the point where we are. But I know that the previous business incubator rent for a, a previous tenant was $250 a month. And so I, I know that you guys have a, have a generous spirit. We were just basically asking you to, to support our mission. So that's really all that I have. I do want to say thank you once again for letting me come. And Patty, who did the scheduling, was so nice. I just want to put in a word for her. And I just want to say too, that there are a couple of parents behind me who also have adults with disabilities in our community, Vicki Folwiler and Mr. Vanamit. I only know his daughter's name. And I'm sure I speak for them too, that we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just got a, got a couple of quick questions. First, I'd like to say your passion is criminal. And, you know, my first immediate reaction is the very worthwhile project.
Thank you.
So I guess the first question I have is your, your people with disability, now they would actually be employed or would be, they donated their time just to be busy?
That's a great question because it's exactly something that tripped me up initially. I, at first, we would do it all volunteer. And I see that a little bit as an audition, if you will. And if we get to the point where we're making enough money to employ people, that, that really is our goal. But initially, it would be volunteering. And so we would have, if you will, volunteer mentors and volunteer workers. And everything we've done so far that I told you about has all been volunteers.
Okay. And I certainly understand your financial problems, but you have certain other things else. And I guess, the main question I have is you would be willing to sign some type of lease? And the reason I ask that question is because we have certain standards we have to meet with the health department. And by signing the lease, those requirements go to you, they're not ours.
That, yes. And, and we would sign a lease. We are, as I mentioned, we are incorporated and we've identified most of our board. So our board would approve, have to approve the lease. And, but yes, we would sign as, as Cody Partners.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation, I realize there are probably some other questions, but my recommendation, me to go ahead and not make a decision today, but come to us with a proposal, something that you think you feel forward, because I think it fits well up there, I really do.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with, with Fisher. Tilden, especially the part of your, you command, like I command your efforts here, what you're doing. I think they're very great. Back to some of the liability part of it, what I'm concerned with because it is taxpayers. Would, is your nonprofit in a position to at least carry a insurance?
We would have to.
You would have to. In addition to the liability though, because you, as you mentioned, the commercial kitchen is very amazing. And with the amazing part of that comes costs. So some sort of coverage, which the last lease is, was required for with to carry as well. And that is a mentor's insurance for the equipment within the kitchens. I don't know what that rendered, but I know that that was a requirement. As far as the $250, I would ask you, like, for Tilden, a proposal. And I'm, I think what you're doing there could definitely go down to, to make a legal documented order or something, but that's a few near proposal. But I do think the, in my opinion, one that we do need to cover the liability of the taxpayers, the equipment inside. So you might want to check into that with part of your proposal. That's the only question I have. Thank you for coming.
The, some of the causes of, that came from our previous debit was they were never open. As far as staffing, the more that this place is open, because people have different times and they might go to the library and they always, it's always that time when they go in there.
And no one's there.
And nobody's there. So it is, I mean, you could be staffed 23 hours a day and there'll be somebody playing about now one hour. Do you see any difficulty at least to being open quite a bit more than maybe the previous debit or as far as the staffing that you're thinking right now? Could it be eight hours, 10 hours during the day? Or again, you said you're going to start slow.
Right. I haven't thought specifically about how many hours per day. But one of the things I have thought about is because of the way it's set up with that large kitchen and then it's really separate and the, and the front area, you know, where you would sell your, your wares there. I would see that what we could do, because I know some of our adults that have been doing some of our, our current activities, they have other things that are scheduled during their day, or at least some days out of the week. But they have been willing to do things in the afternoons and evenings. And because of what we're planning to start with, we could actually do quite a bit of our prep in the afternoons and evenings and staff it with actually a fairly minimal number of people, I think upfront. With, with what we're trying to do, we don't need six people, you know, there to, to staff it. So I, I mean, obviously it would be a slope, you know, I mean, I wouldn't see us actually being open, you know, probably the whole time from nine to five or nine to six at the very beginning. But I do, our goal would to eventually be able to cover all of the hours. Yeah. And I do have a sense a little bit of, that this is a little bit like if you build it, they will come. Because this is not an original idea with me. I wish it was. But we are modeling ourselves after a couple of, several other organizations. And, and what we've seen is that when you have something like this that you offer, people come. I mean, people might come from Portland, from Powell, from, you know, the base, from Basin and so forth, you know. So we don't have those people right now, but we don't have anything we're offering. You know, I, I honestly think that that would be our goal, is to fill all those hours, but not right at first.
Yeah. And I think even, you know, from somebody who has a disabled person in the home. My son was even with the disabled hunters. He was all excited about showing up and being a part of it. I don't think people with the, you know, I think you get a lot of people with some disabilities that will want to show up and do something.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, part of it will be getting the word out. So I, just people don't know what, what opportunities there are.
I have any questions about the concept? I think it sounds great. I think in my time in visiting with the library, people going to those meetings, you know, the coffee thing and the lunch thing, they just want something available. You know, it doesn't necessarily have to be big dinner or big lunch thing right now. But just knowing there's a consistency that if you go up there late morning, you can get a cup of coffee, you know, those types of things. So I think a slow start sounds great.
What I, what I suggest is come back with a more solid proposal.
Do you mean like a business plan?
Business plan, you know, I know it's starting up slow, but we need to have something we can work with. And you know, I echo Commissioner Teal, I can see this possibly being a very low rent. You know, to get this thing going and.
But we need to find out about like the liability insurance and.
Yeah, the insurance, you know, if, I'm sure, obviously you spoke with Director Horner about, have you talked to the library director about your idea of?
No, I have not.
Okay, sit down with her and visit with her, get her thoughts on it. And, and then get, once you get that stuff, get back to hold of our office and we'll get you back on the agenda and hopefully be able to give you an answer.
That's, that's great.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would it be possible to get a copy of an old lease agreement?
This is Mr. Garza, okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Well, we're on break until 10:15. Then Charlie joins us at that time. Excellent.
What's that?
Have a light day. Anything to controversy?
Good job. Pictures of all the brains out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Hey, picture yourself.
Well, we wanted it.
Oh.
You can switch rooms?
Wasn't it downstairs before?
Downstairs.
Downstairs.
During COVID.
During COVID, yeah.
We were there.
That's right.
He's got nine floors.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
Good. I'm on the ride.
No members here, finally?
Yeah. Now we're doing some more riding and.
You guys ready for some breaking news? Yeah. Here, you can hear it here first. Don't be surprised though.
How could I send a message?
So we know your numbers were up. We know that.
I didn't even put it on.
I thought I was.
No, I looked at the message.
What do you do with buffalo stays? You know, I'm gonna do buffalo. Do bison meat. And like, what about in the country, you had all those bison. And distributed the meat anyway?
Or how do you have it?
Um, no. You should take those to the carcass in the park, we'll take two of them. We have a carcass.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Erin's got that buffalo tag, we're heading over next week. She's been talking about using a three hundred wind mag, but I was thinking about just using my three.
Yeah, I got a big down crawl. Any more? Damn sure have three fifty. Where are you going?
Over outside of Jackson, she's got that tag over there. I'm putting out feelers right now where, where to go. We're gonna take the living quarters trailer over and horses and good, go poke around a little bit. Last one I, last one I killed over there with Hunter. We, uh, killed it up behind the Grove on River Ranch. We came in on public land all the way and it was a pretty long ride over, dropped down in there. My brother found a big bull down there and we got him killed. And he said, according to the maps, there's no way to access this from the road through the ranch or around the ranch. So I rode down there and bumped into the ranch. And he was right, there wasn't, but their guy was there feeding his horses. And I said, hey, I said, is there any way to get around to the road without going through your ranch? He goes, no. I said, why? He said, well, I got a buffalo that killed up here. Did you kill that big bull that's been hanging out behind you? And I'm like, which way do I go here? I said, yeah, he said, oh, I said, thank God. He said, that son of a bitch has been chasing my, my dudes, my trail rides, been causing all kinds of problems. He opened the gates to his ranch, ran his four wheeler up there. I only had, I only had to skip the quarters, about five hundred yards. Threw him on his four wheeler, took him down to his truck. It saved us about six hours of extra work. Wow, that's like, whoa. It's when we were eagle with Brad dropping the out creek in Tropair and Fox Creek. We turned on sound, that's great for a couple days. It's always a little snowy when you're going up eagle. It might, but, yeah. Not a, and it was seven degrees at the out creek. And then we dropped in the Tropair, I was snowing around fifteen. Perfect. I think we're close enough to go ahead and start if everyone else is ready. Like, welcome Superintendent Sholley from Yellowstone National Park. Next thing. Community, it's not being a little. Yes, sir. And the dog, yes? Oh, no, Hannah, sorry, we can't start. Good call. You guys need us for the recording or anything? You're probably okay. Well, I guess we can't start, so. I am down.
Back on break.
Yeah, back on a break. No, we can't start. If they're supposed to say we get all around.
So we can continue hunting stories.
Yeah, we can continue hunting stories. The important, the big thing is that all our hunting stories were in the park. Yes. Yeah.
About that time we shot that elk inside the park.
Cody City Park.
Oh, Cody City.
Heading right back up to the, yeah. Back, I've got the lead down. Have you been, I'll ask, I'll wait, I'll wait till we officially begin. Works quite a minute.
Phone calls in the election, not this, with people looking at their calendar and seeing that today is election day. And thinking that maybe we have something that we're supposed to be doing, because it's on all the national calendars, but. So he's had tons of phone calls about it. He didn't actually, you know, like, well, okay, what happened?
Here's your trivia for the day. Okay, that picture you guys have out here of the cars going into Yellowstone nineteen fifteen? Yeah, guess what the entrance fee was? Is this for you guys too? Nineteen fifteen, what was it per vehicle? Seven dollar and fifty cents. Just, what is it right now? Just that for inflation. Quick. Thirty-three dollars. The bargain. Thirty-five dollars per day, per vehicle for a week? Was the seven fifteen, was the seven fifty a, a week long or five day pass? I don't know. My guess is that was just a one.
Probably the T on part two. He was getting that?
Wasn't a part, he thought we were even a part at that point. Maybe it was. Oh, that was later. So what's thirty-five dollars? Per vehicle for a family of four for an average three day stay, breakdown per person? Good, now that's good.
Three days.
Average stay is three dollars, or three days. Family of four. A thirty-five dollar a car. What is it per person per day?
Couple bucks.
Two ninety. Yeah. Might be going somewhere with this. No. I'm just throwing stuff out there. Since it's off the record and everything.
It's, but it didn't respect it.
Yeah. Well, that just tells me they're charging way too much back then. We were trying to. You were gonna what? He was gonna kill and shut me down.
He started without, you know, like, let's. I have one minute. Said twelve fifty for ten fifteen. He gives a. My apologies. My apologies, Superintendent Sholley.
Not needed.
Can we proceed, deputy?
I decided to listen to Lee a little bit longer and so. So now we are welcoming, welcoming Superintendent Sholley from Yellowstone National Park. Thanks for taking the time, still busy with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Where is your?
Thank you. Uh, thanks for having me here. Um, and I know we're gonna try to use you, and I think actually. A busy year, uh, just a quick stay in the park overview and have particular questions afterwards. Um, we're glad it's November. Um, breaking news is that, uh, and these are subject to some adjustments. But allow a million more people in the park in twenty-one than we did in twenty. So they were gonna close the year out right around four point eight million, which is six hundred thousand more than two thousand sixteen, which is previous record year. I think that, uh, you know, you all can be and, and Cody and the community have, uh, incredible partnership we have with the county. And you're very proud of the team in Yellowstone for, uh, the work that the team's done and under very difficult circumstances. Um, you know, COVID has affected all of us to try and operate a national park like Yellowstone, uh, with COVID at record levels like we've seen. And extremely challenging. I've obviously seen some reporting on that. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, all kinds of stories written up about, um, different things that are gonna be contemplated in regards to visitation management, things around the system. Different parks finding different things. Uh, I, I think it's important to recognize natural park service, uh, leading up to the centennial, which is two thousand sixteen. Embarked on a multi-year find your park campaign where we marketed US national parks globally. And grew visitation from two hundred eighty million to three hundred thirty million in a five-year period. And for Yellowstone, uh, that was about a million for people in park each year. I find some irony with us inviting a little bit of find the park and then moving toward a, you know, stream of visitation cap or reservation system and that kind of thing. I do think there is a point in time, we're not there yet, uh, where we need to have conversations about what that means. What does, I want you to look at it from a perspective of maybe the budget you oversee. And the types of things that go on operationally in this county. If you added a million more people into Cody in a single year, what's that mean for your waste water treatment facilities? What's that mean for bathroom cleaning? Uh, you know, you gotta clean your bathrooms, six hundred bathrooms, five times a day instead of three. You got empty two thousand garbage cans, five times a day instead of three. What does it mean when a million people flush the toilets five times per day, per person, more impact wise on waste water treatment? What's the mean of public safety? What are impacts on, on the resources of the park and those types of things? So those are conversations that we're not gonna be able to, you know, come to conclusions on overnight. But there are things we need to talk about in relationship to the upward trends that we're seeing. So nineteen forty-eight was the first year Yellowstone had a million people in the park in a single year. Nineteen sixty-five, we had two million in the park for the first time. Nineteen ninety-two, we had three million in the park for the first time in a single year. Two thousand fifteen, we had four. Sixteen was four point two, was the previous record. We went backwards about a quarter of a million, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And now it would be at four point eight this year. So we've had the luxury in the past of having twenty years plus or minus in between millions. And then right now we're seeing that at an incredibly rapid pace. And so, uh, what's that mean for us? You know, we've got a good strategy, I think, that's like outlining our ability to articulate what the impacts are increasing visitation of resources in Yellowstone. Um, while I appreciate that, um, there's a narrative out there that visitors are overriding the park. The reality is I have every square foot pavement mapped in that park. Every pullout road, parking lot. Parks, two point two million acres. How many square feet, how many, if you compare the square footage of the pavement acreage? How much of the two point two million do you think is pavement in Yellowstone? Less, one percent.
Less than.
Way less. Seventeen hundred and fifty acres. If you take all the developed areas in the park, the hotels, restaurants, housing, name it, sixty-four hundred acres out of two point two million. So it's zero point two three percent. We have a very, very large problem in a very small part of the park. And, you know, it's something that, um, needs our focus. We probably spend ninety-eight percent of our time, energy and budget in that small sliver of the park. The reality is that the overall health, the also ecosystem is in, it's in better condition than it was before Yellowstone became a park right now. So visitors are not thrashing the ecosystem. There are impacts, and we need to know what those impacts are. But we need to do that with the right monitoring data and taking the right actions to protect and mitigate those types of impacts. Uh, so that's, that's kind of one category and strategy. The second one is what are the impacts on what I just mentioned? Impacts on operations, staffing, infrastructure. You know, those are very real impacts as in visitation increases. That's probably the single biggest impact of anything, having a jump of a million people for all three that you mentioned. The third area is what is, what's the impact on visitor experience? You know, um, we've got extensive survey data, we've got more comprehensive survey data from visitors in the park and the system. Seventy plus percent of first time visitors, um, and high eighties, low nineties are having a good, excellent time. That's a big part. You know, we, there are points in time this year where we had, uh, you know, a mile or two backup at West entrance in West Yellowstone. But no cars in line at, could see, or the, sorry, Steve. And so there are areas of the park we're focused on more than others. Old Faithful, obviously, the midway guys are based in Norris Canyon in the west. Those are, um, while we're looking at everything holistically, that's the starting point. As we know, those are the biggest, uh, areas that have the biggest impacts, most congested, that kind of thing. So, uh, you might have seen, we, we tried out the first autonomous shuttle, driverless shuttle, electric vehicle shuttle at Canyon this year. It worked amazingly well. Now, the point wasn't to move a bunch of visitors necessarily, we moved over ten thousand visitors, but was to test the technology. And we were really pleased with how that worked. We think that's a solution in certain micro geographic areas like Canyon, where you've got large parking capacity. Where you've got attractions that are in ultimately close proximity, where people could park their car, get into a shuttle. They easily get from point A to point B, campground, some village lodges, to the village, those types of things. But the technology probably will need some more advancement in relationship to, um, battery life, some things we're looking at. But, uh, we're overall very pleased with that pilot. We've launched the shuttle feasibility study for Old Faithful, which will look at the viability of a shuttle system that would start in Old Faithful itself. And move visitors in and out of Big Action Basin, Big Action Basin. That's gonna be a multi-year process, but we'll, uh, we'll see how that looks. We'll be taking likely some more aggressive actions with the North Front Pride of Canyon, uh, with Norris. Because we're basically at a point where those parking areas are sheer gridlock at certain times today. And so what that'll probably mean is when it becomes near gridlock, it'll be based on parking capacity, people won't be able to go in at those locations. So go do something else and come back. Um, so we're gonna start with these, I think, very strategic actions in the right places and we'll build out from there. Keep in mind also, anything we do in Yellowstone on a bigger scale, we have to do with, uh, NSYNC with Grand Eton. When we shared this station with Grand Eton, uh, and, you know, if we were gonna look at something bigger downstream, um, we would do it in concert with, uh, with Grand Eton, because it's gotta be kind of looked at as a. And so that's the third part of that strategy. Uh, the fourth part is what are the impacts on favorites? You know, economically, recreational access, um, what do, what does, what's Yellowstone think? What does Cody think? What does Cook City think? What does Gardner think? Does Jackson think? And as you know, there's a range of divergent opinions on what should happen, when, where, that type of thing. But, so for us to understand, have these types of conversations and ensure that actions that we take are not unilateral. It's something that's very important to me, you've heard me say that before, uh, that we do it in concert with one another. Um, we may not always agree, but I will be able to explain the logic behind any thought process that I have or our teams have in park. And so those kind of four pillars are, um, are, are framework, are outlined for the strategy, we're filling in a lot of the information that's necessary. You're not gonna see any massive changes next year in the way we operate. Um, it'll be interesting to see over time what that trajectory looks like. I'm sure it'll be up overall, long-term, just like it has been. Uh, you know, will it stay at four point eight? When will we get five? I don't know. I predicted four point five five this year, we may be right at that with that, uh, for east entrance. Um, and once again, we gotta verify some of these numbers because we have just started to get the October numbers in place. Well, through September, January through September, east entrance was at five hundred thirteen thousand in twenty twenty-one. Uh, visitation wise. The record year was five oh four for east entrance. So, uh, that was for the whole year was five oh four. So it gets through September, it's five thirteen. So you've already surpassed the record year as far as visitors entering the east entrance. I've got some other, some other number, like a chair was given, how interested you are. Uh, we see about three times that number of visitors coming to the west. And so right now, the, the ranking, if you wanna call it that, west has the most visitors, followed by, uh, south and north. Gardner, if you actually kind of go back and forth for second, and then east and, you know, east and Cook City. So, you know, there's no question that, uh, you know, from a workforce standpoint, uh, all of this is interlinked. You know, our ability to manage that level of visitation, manage the ecosystem, uh, is dependent on a quality workforce. Probably the, the single biggest issue facing the park workforce was housing. And, um, you know, we've been, we're about halfway through a forty-five million dollar housing improvement project in Yellowstone. We made some tremendous progress in housing, Old Faithful, Beckler, Mammoth, uh, next year will be Lake Canyon. But these are, these are us replacing nineteen sixty, seventies, eighties trailers and upgrading existing non-trailer housing. What it doesn't account for is the fact that in Gardner, in West Yellowstone especially, uh, almost every rental's near B P or B R B L. Uh, so there's almost no rentals for employees. And then the housing prices have gone through the roof, as you all know. And so you have employees that have been saying, in Mammoth or Gardner, or working Mammoth and living Gardner. They got into that market in the eighties and the early two thousands, uh, at a very cheap price per house. Now they're retiring. It's about twenty percent of that workforce is retiring in the next five years. Where do you put their replacement? So we're gonna need additional housing capacity, either in the park or in partnership uh, with Gateways, just to maintain the current staffing levels that we have, as, as many of those employees retire and uh, take their houses with them. So we're, we're working on a considerable number of options to both look at potentially adding housing units in the park and um, public partnerships uh, with communities in Gardner, West Yellowstone, because of others. We'll see how that goes. But that is fundamentally a very, very enormous challenge for us.
And Cam, just, just real quick, I know it's been explained before, but when you're talking about five hundred and thirteen visitors through the park from the East Gate, how is a visitor counted?
So there are a formula. There's a, a window of time every several years is set where we count every occupant, every vehicle, and then come up with a formula. I think East entrance, uh, I can, I, you checked this. I think it's two point sixty per vehicle is the average. And south is like two point seven. So it's in that range. So any vehicle that comes in gets counted as part of the formula. And then, you know, we had one difference from just backing up a little bit from last year to this year. We had no buses in the park last year. We had nine hundred buses in the park just in September. Uh, so, uh, bus traffic picked up again this year. That's another, I think, contributing factor to the increase in visitation. How? You know, once we get past COVID and I think Americans start traveling internationally, um, and international start coming back into parks, I don't know how that's gonna balance out. But uh, I think it's safe to say the upward trend is is gonna continue.
I didn't know if you wanted to wait till, till with the visitation.
Yeah, well, let's wait until you know.
Well, yeah, and so I, 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 we've got some uh, doing very successful things in support of both the previous administration and this administration in Washington, uh, in acquiring funding through the Great American Outdoors Act for uh, different maintenance projects. And uh, you know, we uh, coming up, and we'll, we'll put this out uh, more formally, but just starting next year, and this is important for uh, for Cody to know, uh, the Lewis River Bridge project, which is between Grant Village and South Entrance, that bridge will be replaced. Uh, it will start in spring of twenty-two, so next spring. And it's projected to end the fall of twenty-three. There will be some traffic delays. They'll do mostly during the day, you know, the thirty minutes of traffic one way. There will be some overnight closures at certain points for certain periods of time, blasting and things like that. That bridge, just like a lot of our bridges, was in dire need of replacement. And uh, you know, we were very fortunate to get that funded through the Great American Outdoors Act. Twenty-two miles of, of road will be rehabilitated between West Yells, uh, West Thong and Old Faithful. That will start, uh, same spring of twenty-two and is projected to end the fall of twenty-three. Be some uh, nighttime closures um, after September fifth uh, that we'll need to do and we'll get all that communicated, but there will be uh, some things we need to work on as far as making sure people understand where they can get to and where to get the taxi here. And then a big one for us, uh, Yellowstone River Bridge, which is the bridge, if you're going from Tower to Cook City. Uh, if you've driven across that bridge, um, you get across as fast as you can. It's in, not, not in good conditions by an eighty million dollar project. We will, we'll be rebuilding a new, building a new bridge and taking out the old ones. And that should alleviate a lot of the traffic issues. And you can see if we were trying to redevelop take the existing bridge. That's gonna kick off fall of twenty-two of next year and is uh, slated to be completed fall of twenty-five. You know, I think that uh, we've got the, the best team uh, I've ever worked with in the national park system in all my, in all my career. But I think that there is a, a definite need for us to together take a look at each one of those areas that I mentioned in that visitor use strategy and think about um, how we effectively deal uh, and manage with protecting the resources, protecting and mitigating impacts, protecting staff, mitigating impacts on staff and operations. Continue to, to maintain a, a quality visitor experience and then completely understand what the David Keyes wants and need from, from the park. Understand, especially economically, uh, how important tourism is to Yellowstone. So um, you know, there's a bunch of reporting out there on visitation caps and reservation systems. That is not something we're gonna implement uh, in the near future. But it is something that um, we are thinking about. Now, I don't think people need to freak out about that. Uh, because it doesn't mean, we don't know what that's gonna look like. But I, I think it's, you know, and I don't know what that visitor, visitation threshold is. At some point, visitation continues to go up. You need people to manage people. Uh, and there's gotta be actions that are, are taken that are commensurate with whatever we have to manage, right? And so, uh, you know, a lot more to come on that and that's, that's a multi-year conversation. We're looking at what other parts are feeling. Uh, we have implemented the reservation systems. What's working, what's not working? And uh, I'm completely cognizant of the massive number of divergent opinions on that topic. So, um, with that, I'll just open up to questions and we can, we can chat and see what's on your mind.
Well, he, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, Cam, pretty much answered in his last, uh, last statement there. But I'm gonna ask a little bit. If you go to Chris Paul, uh, based on the, you know, the studies that you're doing and analyzing, some of the numbers are obviously concerned of a threshold somewhere. Uh, and with that, I know you can't pin it down. But are we looking, you know, based on the increase of visitors in the last twenty years? Do you see, how far out are we for hitting that limit? Ten years less? I mean, uh, I know it's a.
Yeah, it's a tough one to uh.
Other national parks have, have two settlements.
Yeah.
Uh, with the infrastructure we have, what do you think our limit is?
I think what you're hearing about Yellowstone is, is the size. Three states, five entrances. Um, if you look at, say, Rocky Mountain, which implemented a, a reservation system last year. You know, Rocky was traditionally getting about four and a half million visitors a year. And it has seventy-two miles of road. So we're gonna be at four point eight with three hundred and seventy-five miles of road. I've had a lot of conversations about people saying, you know, lots of areas, and it's true. A lot of areas in the park, even in July, August, um, are not busy. And so a lot of folks who want to push visitors to the less busy parts of the park, right? The problem is, it's, it's, it's a bucket list trip for people to come to the park, right? They're not gonna not go to Old Faithful or Canyon, uh, or Norris, or any of the, the real popular areas. Uh, and so, um, you know, I don't know that we get to a, like a, a reservation system per se with a, a daily cap anytime soon. When it happens, and then it gets back to the complications of, for instance, you know, you look at the visitor, the vehicle entries in the East Entrance and Northeast Entrance, and they're pretty low uh, compared to West Entrance and North and South. So, you know, does, and am uh, looking forward to engaging West Yellowstone this year to see how they're feeling. Just a, a busy, busy year, backups into town on a regular basis. What do they want? Yeah, that's the busiest entrance by far in the park. You know, it would suggest that I, I won't speak for West Yellowstone, but I guess if they don't want me to put a cap on a single entrance station and push visitors to other entrance stations. Yeah. My point is, we have had those conversations, so I'm looking forward to really, especially after this year, getting these numbers in. And once again, there's a lot we can do without implementing something park-wide. As far as your question about when, I don't know what that threshold is exactly. And I think there's a lot of things, I've already said this, I mean, you've got the spectrum of doing nothing over here, doing this visitation and implementing, you know, caps over here. And in many areas, we've done nothing on this side of the spectrum uh, to even basic, do basic traffic management and congestion relief. And so, uh, I really think we need to continue building, if we get to this, we get to this, but we'll do it together. But let's take these actions that are necessary, kind of like you said, micro geographically first. See what's working. Some of the most simple solutions have worked, by the way. You know, if you've been to Artist Point at, at Canyon, that's one of the most popular parks to park. This came from the team and this just gets to, it doesn't always have to be complicated. There's a, there's two bathrooms at the end of the parking lot. I don't know if you, last time you were in there, but you pull in and it's not very welcoming to your parking lot, super busy. People park and they walk out to the Artist Point. They walk back to the parking lot, then they see the bathroom on the other end of the parking lot. So they walk all the way to the bathroom and they walk back to their car. Well, that second part of that adds a substantial amount of time uh, for, for their car to be parked, which, you know, people come in, try to find parking spaces and that kind of thing. Next door, um, we have, that they ever called viewpoint, you know, a larger bathroom capacity, much larger parking capacity. So this year, the team said, hey, can we just close these vault toilets at Artist Point? And we said, sure, let's try it. And we did, and guess what? The turnover time was unbelievable. I mean, there were four days I drove to Artist Point, July, August, and there was probably twenty percent of parking spaces. And so, you know, I think if you sat back and you didn't do anything like that, or like I said, on North Room Drive, just let traffic back up into main road, instead of saying, okay, there's a hundred fifty parking spaces. When we get to one fifty, we're not gonna let people pull in there. Tell them to go somewhere else and come back, or whatever the case is. I mean, those are things that we can do to uh, to manage visitation. If there's a point where even those things don't work, I don't know what that timeline looks like and has a long answer. But uh, what I do promise is that it's not gonna be a surprise and that we'll work together on whatever that long-term solution is.
Superintendent, one of the things you mentioned was your labor issue, housing issue with labor. Do you, in the park, if you want to increase your housing for your lawyers, can you increase your footprint? Or do you have to do it within the footprint area that you have?
It's a good question. So we will never expand beyond our current developed footprint. So that's sixty-four hundred acres I mentioned is, is pretty much what it is. Now, within that sixty-four hundred acres, there are areas that are not currently developed. So we would never expand that. But I do think that it's, I do think that it's really important that people understand the percentage of developed versus non-developed in a park. Because it's, it's a very, very high skill percentage, but we would never expand that.
Well, when you're, when you're saying you're never gonna expand that, would you foresee, especially if you go to the, the shuttle system, you know, creating parking staging areas? Or if, if you park here, you get on the shuttle and you'll see all of these different things. Would you foresee expanding it for that?
Well, once again, and then, um, if you look at the Old Faithful shuttle feasibility we're doing, it might be expanding the parking in Old Faithful, but there's a massive amount of parking there already. So we, again, it's already within development. Depending on where the other end was, I look at the road, the road corridor is developed. So is, and that's part of that, that acreage. So if you're gonna put shuttle stops or, you know, different turnaround areas for shuttles and things like that, I, I think that could be done very easily within the developed footprint. The, the struggle we have with uh, the shuttle system in Old Faithful, for instance, though, is what we found is, you know, and we've talked about this here, is, you know, park-wide shuttle concept. Because of the, the number of overnight accommodations in the park, most people wanna be in their cars. One of the things we hear is on the shuttle, you know, you might wanna stop and see a bison, you might wanna see an elk, you might wanna see a bird, you might wanna go fishing, Joe. A shuttle system maybe doesn't allow that. You don't get to stop and have a picnic wherever you want, those kind of things. And so I think that uh, you know, we've gotta look at where, and, and so most, what we found is most people wanna come in their cars, get to their overnight accommodation, they'll load the suitcases and the backpacks and whatever. And then if there's a shuttle that's there, it's conducive to get them to where they wanna be. They'll take it. But I think it's a, we're a ways away from any type of look at a park-wide shuttle system, wanting to be enormously expensive. And number two, I don't think that's actually what the visitors want in many ways.
Well, this superintendent, uh, I, I use it for park use, a shortcut to get over to out and John's, the football game. I was sort of, uh, I was surprised that I hit my, my Yellowstone pass coming back. They still already give you a Grand Teton pass, so I'll be thirty-five bucks. And the gal tried to upsell me on something else, I don't know. There's an incentive program.
No, you can buy a multi.
Yeah, you can buy a, you can buy a National Parks pass. Yeah, so, but as far as sharing the revenue with, with Grand Teton before, was it all one big pile? And now you're splitting all that up.
Yeah, so I would have before I got here, but there was a uh, a Teton Yellowstone pass. And it got, it got complicated in regards to dividing the revenue. It was easy for me. And, and once again, you can buy a National Parks pass for eight. So if you can spend thirty-five, you get the Grand Teton and thirty-five, you get the Yellowstone. It's better just to go with the National Parks, that's probably what they shoot for. So, yeah. The, the more thing for you is to buy, buy the pass at Yellowstone. Cause we get to retain the fees.
As far as, you talk about the extra million plus visitors that came, and then I'm averaging thirty-five bucks per carload. You know, you get a lot of uh, extra income. But with the, the visitors, uh, is it sort of offset by more employee services or more expenditures? Or uh, is there a, a, a way to, well, maybe you give uh, park workers a raise if there's more people coming in?
Yeah, well, that's not within my control, uh, giving a raise to park workers. I think, uh, you know, just like we saw with communities, workforce shortages because of COVID, that, that hit us hard this year, especially concessioners, restaurants, hotels and things like that. You know, I think that, uh, you're right. More visitation should translate to more revenue for fees. It doesn't always, to be surprised. Depending on where people buy the pass, uh, depending on, uh, you know, you know, we, a variety of different factors. It's, it's not always a huge increase in visitation translates to a huge increase in revenue. You know, so there's trade-offs, just like you all make with the budget for the county. And um, you know, at, at some point, you don't have enough revenue to cover all the, all the needs and requests that come in. And so you gotta prioritize. And that's, that's what we're probably more focused on right now is where, where are there opportunities for increased revenue? And we raised efficient fees, uh, fishing license fees this year. That jumped our fishing revenue, uh, license revenue from nine hundred thousand to about one point six. That helps pay, we're taking that money, uh, invested into, in a fish restoration, projects like that. You know, the thirty-five dollars per car. I think it's barring, like I said, it breaks down to two dollars and ninety cents per person per day. You know, when you look at the average impact that uh, visitor comes to the park for three days has on the full suite of operations that we have. Um, I think that's gotta be looked at at some point downstream. But that gets back to, at some point, like I said, you need people to manage people. And if uh, the number of people you have is flat, the number really you need to help manage is going up at astronomical rates. There's, there's gotta be a give and take there somewhere. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but uh, you know, everything from housing to uh, you know, a, a workforce that is just cranking for six months out here. Keep in mind, September, uh, it has been for years, it's much busier than June. So we're not seeing this traditional, you know, Memorial Day to Labor Day that we used to decades ago in parks. We're seeing um, five months, five months of really busy. The shoulder seasons are basically disappearing, so to speak, in the long, really shoulder seasons. So, but a lot of your workforce is seasonal and they're here for a four months. Uh, that's great when you have them, but if you're still busy in month five and six, a lot of challenges present by that as well.
Did you have a problem getting, of course, with COVID and everything, you have a country, employees also cutting out. Did you run into a shortage of employees?
Yeah, the, the, I mean, not the park service as much as the concessioners. Concessioners do rely on uh, international employment more so than the park service does. But uh, you know, I think the, the focus for next year, last year, we opened up about sixty percent of hotel rooms in the park. And most of the food, if not all of it, last year was crack. This year, we tried to get about eighty percent of hotel rooms open, which we hit. But, um, because of that workforce shortage, a lot of the food and beverage operations couldn't keep up with the number of people staying overnight accommodations. So I think it's going to be important for us to work with our concession partners, we are great partners. Yellowstone Park jurisdictions on that core. To make sure that the services that we are opening are, um, able to keep pace with the number of visitors on the impacts on those facilities. And we had free, free clinics in the park. We ended up with just under 100 cases of COVID park-wide. That's with about 3,040 of the contractors in the park. Uh, so that's about almost 40 more than we had last year. But, uh, so, you know, COVID will continue for a general channel, just to us and our partners who live in the board and help them get out of that situation.
Another question, and I don't know whether it's you or the concessioners, but one of the things that seems to be coming to light is the whole charging cars, electric service now. Have you addressed that or is the park addressing that? I don't have questions here, Cody, about where they plug in.
Yeah, no, that's, you know, I think that's, that is a, uh, something we've got to prepare for in the future. So we're looking at, we've got multiple partners that want to, um, help us work into identify what locations that EV charging stations need to be placed. We do have EV charging stations in the park. Uh, we probably don't have enough. So we're looking at, uh, with our partners like VanCara, with Northwestern Energy and others, what is the right number of parking spots and charging stations to have, save for overnight accommodations? And then these quick charges where you can charge your batteries, you know, for an hour or whatever the case is, working with our service station contractors that want to put some of these quick charges into the service station areas. And so we're, we're kind of building a strategy around that, but, uh, we're, we're still a ways off. We have a capacity. It's not going to be where we're probably in the future, given where.
Thanks.
I have a subject that's a little slightly outside the park, but. And it has to do with the Berthoud Highway. That are known to most of us as a work of my way. And I do want you to know, I, I think Park County appreciates the state of handling as well as the park service taking up the maintenance on that. Uh, I don't know what the future will bring with that, but in my, uh, I guess request more than a question, and that is, I know that you're somewhat familiar with, uh, the emergency closures and the, and the lack of communication with stakeholders throughout, um, in the emergency closures on that. And a year ago, we had, uh, people stranded out there that were locked in behind. Since that time, they've been in, in contact with everyone since. And ultimately, you are the boss there, so I'm requesting to push to have him give a, a meeting put together. We've tried, we, when there was discussion starting last spring to have it, we never did have it. We had multiple cancellations through the partners. And, and most recently in October, we had an emergency closure, which Park County was not even notified. The closure is in our county. Our Sheriff's Department needs to know about this as well as, uh, human fish, especially that time of years. You know, we have partners already over there to, to, to area. And I really would like you to, you could push Everett to coordinate a, a, a meeting in nearer than, than in, sooner than, than later and include all the stakeholders for that to come up with a standard of operations for these closures. Square months involved.
Yeah, no, I'd rather do that. I've been in Cook City, uh, twice for community meetings in the last three months. That's come up there too. So I think there's, uh, you know, the, the original legislation of Berthoud is pretty interesting. It directs the USDA, not Department of Interior, to maintain a road between Motel 00 and North East Centrist.
I don't know how you got stuck with it.
Well, well, maybe I'm not. No, don't write that down. No, I, I don't mean it that way. What I mean is, we think there's some things that we need to clarify in relationship to the MOU that we operate after with USDA. Or there needs to probably be some type of legislative clarification from that National Party of Legislation. We're working on that now. And, you know, we fly over to Cook City, we happily do that in partnership. I thought you were going to bring up them wanting to plug, uh, certain, certain residents that wanted to plug.
No, I'm not going to open that channel. My concern is with, with residents getting stranded up there, locked behind gates with no way out.
Yeah, and so.
And people not getting informed that it was happening.
Yeah, and so it's a no man's land up there. We were maintaining the road. Everett does a great job with his team. We don't have the enforcement jurisdiction on that road. The state does. And, you know, I know Everett's got a good relationship with Highway Patrol. And there is no question we've got to do a better job. We just had a problem with it, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Where, you know, we thought a snowstorm was coming in, someone closed the gate and probably didn't do the best job of communicating with state owners. So happy to do that. And maybe you can let me know who you think should be in that meeting.
I think Everett has a pretty good list. I will say, I don't know how some of them got left out of the last, uh, request for a meeting that was canceled the day before it was supposed to happen. But it involves, you know, multi-state even.
Yeah, absolutely.
Carbon County as well, in Montana. You know, he, he, he worked directly with Montana Department of Transportation. This is fine and dandy, but that is, that's not their highway. They didn't close it. The closure was on the Wyoming part, which we were not prepared for.
Well, this isn't an excuse. This gets back to the staffing. And we spend about half $90 on Berthoud every year. There were times because of his limited staffing that he, as the, the North District Manus Manager, he himself was out driving clouds up on, on Berthoud. And so we've got to do a better job of giving him support and.
Anything we can do to help, but we need to be.
I've got some ideas. Yeah, why don't you throw a couple of snowplows up there?
We did that one, one statewide, we did that once on these cases.
Yeah, and just so you know, Lou Brierner, the governor, we, we've had good conversations around collaboration on Berthoud, obviously, and many other, uh, issues. But we're happy to get that together and I'll follow up on it.
And one other is the heads-up informational thing that we can conceal for a while. Next August, Park County will be hosting a congressional tour. Uh, what, what, it's going to be the first through, uh, statewide, uh, action that is going to be hosted, put on by the WCC, Wyoming County Fish Association. The first one will be in Park County, in the Big Horn Basin, rather, within only four counties. And that, the postal park is a huge part of that. What we do is we'll bring in congressional people and staffers from Washington and other states. And as part of that tour, I would request and ask you to think about somewhat of some part of the involvement in that. As we move forward with meetings, I may ask you. They do it in other parts of the country. In Wyoming, it's known when the northeast, uh, uh, part of Wyoming, more or less centered around coal and energy, but this is, uh, this one will still on the discussion, but tourism is obviously an also part of Big Horn Basin. Just like heads up.
Thank you, but happy to participate. Thank you.
We sure appreciate it. And I'm going to take this moment to do a public thank you to Superintendent Chali, who helped me out the other day. We, for years, I've been, I've been hosting, uh, Outdoor Green Kids, Outdoor Green Foundation, that donates hunts to medically challenged kids. And we've been guiding for years and I reached out to Superintendent Chali and he waved our fees for my hunter the other day and his dad, and they had, they came back and had a great time. It was nice. Thank you. Anything else? Sure appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah, thanks for having me. And, uh, we'll be in touch, reach out if you need anything at all. Come up and visit. Appreciate all, I really appreciate the partnership with this, with this commission, um, all the county commissions. But, uh, uh, really have a, had a great time in Cody. It's a tremendous community and we're very pleased to be partners with you. So I, I, I know you know, I know you know for sure, uh, you can reach out to me directly with anything that you need, questions that you have, you think that we can be doing something better, uh, something you want us to look at. Those conversations are really important to me, so don't hesitate to reach out if you need something. Make sure we can get you down to the county.
Thank you. Safe travels. Thanks, guys. They had an extra day and then I reached out to him and. Just get him, just get him.
Well, you know, it's not, they'll take that. Yep. I can, I did recognize him from that.
Next up, if they're sitting out there, is Brian out there?
Yeah, they are.
Okay. Yes. Oh, there. Come on in. Keep the ship on schedule. That's not bad. Thank you.
Next, Park County, engineer Brian Edward, broken scope bits, four new motor graders and one new tractor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did, uh, block fit for the four new motor graders. And I still were been working on a live back program through HONNIT with John Deere. So we did every, every year, we got eight graders sold. Here, first one is for active equipment, uh, for the TV. Right close.
We have reps for both TV and ESS on it here.
My apologies.
So work for TV. Bid for four new motor graders. And they list, uh, optional equipment, which is five-year extended warranty, $47,800.
That is for all four combined.
For all four composite, correct. Thanks for the clarification. And then, uh, they live, they would exercise the buyback as a trade, which is to get through HONNIT. Uh, $1,120,000. We'll have to kind of confirm that, that number. Go back and look at our buyback agreement. So a total net bid for TV equipment, $180,000, $105.76. Yeah, 180, 105, 70, that's in there. Watch another shot if anyone can. The other baby is from our HONNIT equipment. HONNIT, so all of it for the, out of, out of campus. Wyoming companies. Of course, John Deere 772 GP, which is what we have now currently. Four new motor graders, $1,385,241.44. And, uh, it was going to get for optional equipment. The. Oh, so the, the buyback option, we're going to have to confirm this number, 265, 241, 44.
Everybody eat that one, Brad?
Uh, 265,241.44. That might be the buyback, set the buyback for the, uh, that you're offering for these two machines that were, or these four machines that we're buying today. Okay, we need to probably go look at that because it'll be the same number of staff.
The two, what was it, 200? I, I had from your deals last year, 280 was their offer.
Okay, we're going to have to look at those numbers because that's a set of that was.
That was 1, 1.12.
Yeah.
$1,120,000 for the four.
Yeah, so I. Yeah, we're just going to have to look at that.
So that might be the band?
The, the, the band, I think, is going to be, I apologize, we shouldn't have looked at that, but there's a, there's a buyback agreement where before you go into this, you know, the set on what we would get with HONNIT to buy that back, I don't think that's that number. Is it, is it?
Should be the 280 number. Are you going to take a look at that?
We can, we can take a look at it, but he's got down here 260, 265,241.44. But we need to compare that. The other thing I guess I did need is the buyback, so that's the, yeah. So he's met, okay. Yeah, he took off the, yeah, that, oh, sorry, that, that would be, that'd be his name, yes.
At 265.
Yeah, 265, it's like that. 2.144, something like that. Since I'm here, uh, buyback number that they give for the four machines we buy. Uh, again, this is the HONNIT, we'll go back to get the other. So the John Deere is two years, 292,000. Three years, this would be per machine. Three years, 270,000. Four years, 255,000. Five years, 235,000. The one other, two-year buyback was 225,000. Three years, 205,000. Four years, 181,700. And the five years, 167,100. And as you recall, that's a pretty important number because the way that is what our purchase price. Let's see, what's our, what was the cost of service? Any questions on the motor grid?
Uh, just, I, just to confirm.
The buyback is guaranteed regardless of what print we go with, correct?
Correct, so. I think if Kenny did, they said they would exercise, or you know, about the.
They had operated.
They were very equaling the owners by.
Yeah, correct.
Not, not equally, we're exercising their buyback. They buy them back.
Well, they buy them back.
They buy them back at their buyback prices.
Altering that for us. Just want to confuse that for the year. Do you have an answer for first 15 minutes? Yeah, well, on these, we're going to see how it goes. We probably don't have enough time to work this, the recommended award today. On the track, on the track. The motor grader will be. Oh, yeah, so let's get the dump truck. Yeah, so the dump truck, this is from Peterville. Their bid for a Peterville model three sixty-seven, uh, two thousand twenty-three model, Camberback sub dump truck. Price for one unit, two hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars. They listed optional equipment, extended warranty of six thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars.
Say that again.
Six thousand, seven hundred twenty-three. Which is a net bid without trade of two hundred seventy-one thousand, seventy-two dollars with an extended warranty. The, um, option with trade. They offered, uh, uh, twenty thousand dollars for the dump truck that would be traded in.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah, twenty thousand, so with that optional warranty, their debt with the trade is two hundred fifty-one thousand, seventy-two dollars. But.
Brian, what are we trading?
Want you to ask that? Dump truck.
It's a two thousand ten Volvo.
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten Volvo.
Yeah.
Two thousand ten Volvo.
From Tri-State. I feel we. Okay, I think I got, got them both their bids here together.
Yeah, there's two, two bids.
Yeah, two, two bids, so here's the dump truck.
I know.
Oh, two separate, okay. Two bids for the dump truck from, uh, Tri-State. So the first one's a Volvo model DHD sixty-four F three hundred. Uh, new dump truck, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars. Uh, no optional equipment, so that total without trade, two fifty-seven, two seventy-four. They offered the trade for the, uh, two hundred ten Volvo, uh, forty-five thousand dollars. So their vetted with the trade, two hundred twelve thousand, two hundred seventy-four. I might also say that there's kind of a consensus amongst all the truck dealers that they're so far out on ordering trucks. Uh, and I didn't tell you on the last one, but this one says, there's some exceptions, but one, one two thousand twenty-three of the Volvos. So chances of us giving anything much sooner about their bid.
Yes.
What is the optional equipment, why did they not include it?
Um.
Or was it included in the base price?
Uh, the optional equipment was an extended warranty.
And I actually listed that in the back.
Yeah, he lists that in the back.
There was a separate place for it, so you didn't have to list this optional.
Yeah, that's the way I understand it.
Yeah, so, okay.
And we go over that, there's quite a few different options on warranty, what we can, can't do.
Who was their rig up partner on that one, since they have two bids?
That one was.
I'll call that a new question.
That one was Coys, Coys, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Bell's delivery down that dump truck was, uh, in the November twenty twenty-two, just for your reference.
Thank you. All right, well, go, yeah, here we go, short town, great. Okay, um, um, okay, that's the difference is the, is the.
Yes, sir.
So here's the, the other update, uh, or the other Volvo truck, DHD sixty-four F three hundred. And, uh, who's this one with, with the update?
Uh, three B.
Three B, okay. But the base price for the new truck, two hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred twenty.
Excuse me, Brian, then I got those two mixed up, lower one's three B, higher one's Coys.
Higher one's Coys, okay, so this one would be Floyd, Floyd Brothers. Two sixty-one, eight hundred twenty. Forty-five thousand dollar trade in, no optional equipment listed on the front page, we'll get into the warranty information. That bid, bid after trade, two hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred twenty. The updates of file standard. And that's a dump truck, this is Foyds and Coys Brothers. Western Star. Uh, it's got Swenson, Pinky, serious controls. Duraclass. The bid, uh, all forty-seven X. So bid for one unit, two hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars. They listed the optional equipment in a separate place for the warranty, extended warranty. Um, they offered for trade for that two thousand ten Volvo, twenty-five thousand dollars. Gives a net bid of two hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred forty-six zero cents. Uh, they say if awarded, Floyd will do everything possible to deliver sooner, but they listed the delivery date of January third, first, two thousand twenty-three.
Which, which upset.
This, this. Dump truck, this is Floyd. And, uh, who drove it with Kevin?
America.
Oh, America, yes, that one's America. In a Western Star. Williams, Goodwin, of the Dan, Monroe, Pinky, Force America controls. Uh, bid for one unit, two hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. Got the list on the front of the options, but I'm sure it's in here. Twenty-five thousand for the trade offered. That bid, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-four. Looks like little faster, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. He also said a word in.
Back up on that, when you say that the premium price was two fifty-two, four ninety-four.
Two fifty-three, oh, four.
Delivering that wasn't worth it.
That was, yeah, for them. We did that.
Oh, we did that, sorry.
That's it?
Wait, we're.
How many more you got?
Um, we're done for dump truck. There's a stop for all of these. Uh, tractors on that.
So, first one's Tri-State. And this tractor of, for a Volvo, a hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-four zero cents. One twenty-eight, seven eighty-four. And then on the trade option, they offer sixteen thousand for trade in, which is a what? Two thousand four, what's your show? Delivery date, it says same section, page, the details, so. From Peterville, Wyoming, out of Caster. New truck. New build, a hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred seventy. They listed extended warranty optional equipment, seven thousand, six hundred ninety-eight. With that extended warranty, a hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred sixty-eight. They offered, uh, fifteen thousand for trade. So with the extended warranty and the space bid, the net is a hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-eight. So that's with warranty unless the trade. They said scheduled delivery date, uh, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Woods truck. This is a Western Star, forty-seven X, long. Uh, base did a hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred ninety-six. Optional equipment not listed, listed separate. Uh, bid for the trade, twenty-four thousand, four hundred ninety-six. Which gives a bet bid of one hundred thousand, seven hundred zero dollars. Scheduled delivery date, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
As you, uh, yeah, we'll see you back here in a second, yeah, we're guessing that just a bit.
Yeah, I think you guys will probably just use the motor graders today, if it's spent some time really going through these, and then, uh, hopefully recommend a award next Tuesday, next Tuesday, yeah, we're gonna convene. All right. Thank you.
It's out for the, uh, Park County Land Director, do I know, discussion about permitting small wastewater systems. And, and just about re. Thank you, Dawson.
So, um, so in, um, in the past, Park County has occasionally done some septic system permitting within municipal boundaries for a variety of reasons. Um, we also have a history of septic systems that exist in city boundaries, but were issued before they were city, in the city. And so, um, recently, we had a landowner, a Coby, within the municipal boundaries request a small wastewater permit. And I'm not in favor of issuing permits within municipal boundaries. I have been approached by DEQ, um, under our delegation agreement, to help those people with their systems. But to date, I have basically told them no, that even if they're asking for us to help, that it's not within our jurisdiction. So what I'm seeking from you is essentially clarification, your position on, um, the authority of our delegated local officials or small wastewater administrators, uh, or other designees here in the county to permit small wastewater systems within municipal jurisdictions in Park County. With the understanding, again, there have been times in the past where a few of them have been issued. But I would like a, a line in the sand, basically your decision moving forward as to how this should be handled. I have reached out to the cities, um, and I've heard from Mati C. Powell, and you'll hear from Cody today. Um, Mati C. has an ordinance basically stating that it shall be unlawful to construct or maintain any privy, privy vault, septic tank, cesspool, or other facility intended or used for the disposal of wastewater within their municipal boundary. Powell basically says in a nutshell that they require all residential uses to connect sewer mains. Um, and Todd Stole's here to address their thoughts on the city of Cody. Um, and I did provide you with a map, basically the city of Cody is the, the number one place where there have been, it, uh, permits issued. And so I'll let Todd address the county, or the city's feelings, if that makes matter.
I hope you're better, that's right. Okay, uh, well, thanks for, for listening, uh, you know, Todd Stole's a planner, very ask me, we're just gonna share our experience, um. I guess I'd say right now, uh, it hasn't been coordinated in the long past, as far as related to that jurisdiction. See, I believe the permit issues, that, um, there was a lot of coordination, you didn't know necessarily what it was, this year or not. We did have a similar code that says, you know, city sewers available during. So, I guess in brief, we support what Joe is asking for. Ultimately, you look at the state statute and so forth, authorities ultimately, the, the delegate authority, you can't argue words, this is how we want to report this one. But ultimately, um, we think it's just cleaner, if he, you, this is permitting agency, they issue that for this one. Okay, thank you, Bob.
So I did send you a draft resolution with consideration, um, and we'll just be seeking your decision.
Well, it makes all sense, the world is, as, you know, just for, end of that show, Todd said, DEQ's a violent authority, we're just acting as, basically as their agent. And, uh, I don't feel that we need to act as their agent within the municipalities, that's an agreement they come up, either permit themselves or work out with the municipalities if they choose and desire to be the, the acting agent, so I have no problem with us saying no.
But. I don't either, my only question is in the draft resolution, have you worked with Brian's office?
I did.
Drafting this?
Yes.
So then we feel this is still a draft, or?
Um, well, I put draft until I.
I mean, you tell us, I'm ready for.
Get mail.
It's been reviewed.
Ready for print.
Mr. Mr.
Uh, I get.
I was just gonna, if you want to go, I was, I was just gonna make.
Go ahead. Oh, second.
So they moved and seconded, so further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
There you go.
And want to say.
Oh, I got it. Joyce, you, 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 if you draw the signatures on the same page, so.
I do know that.
Well, all we need, and all, all I would like is, is a notation on the second signature page of what, what it's attached to. You can go silently, whatever, I just, we, we just have a problem putting our signatures on a blank piece of paper.
Oh, I understand.
Because.
You can make it, I sometimes make it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll leave this.
Yeah, whatever works, just so that we're not.
I got you.
We don't have signatures floating out there, and you go get a loan or something.
We do often, yeah, we do often put like a header, so that.
Yeah, whatever.
That's the fine seated, for those that don't fit.
Seventy-five. All right. Then keep Mr. Teal.
Mr. Chairman, move, we do our executive session.
Moving seconded, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let's carry. I like that, we're kind of.
We said.
From a hunting standpoint, they have the holy law of the grinner ruse. You can drive up there, you push guys and a couple of drivers out, and they walk through this and stand down below the tree, but you can't get up there. They're good. Well, I was getting into water.
I don't tie wet.
I don't tie. I'm probably good.
Wow, Brian.
Yep, you're up. Okay, next up is County Engineer Ryan Edwards, assisted by his right-hand man, Tom Harsh. Backed up by Paco Linder.
Okay, so we kind of get into this a little bit every year. The, in the summary that traffic put together, the today's cost, you can see with the P and E equipment, the cat creator, works out to be about 313,076 compared to 346,000 for the John Deere. But then, you know, with the same buyback on both, looking at debt cost today, the cat looks like the way to go. But when we come back in on the buyback, you can see the buybacks that they put for two years, and get into what our cost of ownership is. The John Deere on the two-year buybacks, 27,155 per creator, whereas the cats 44,038 per creator. And it's just because what cat offers for the buyback for their creator, it's not near what auto offers. And that's always what kind of what's been happening since I've been with the county, we run into this every year. And we just went through this with both the cat representative and the John Deere rep. It kind of ran through the whole scenarios and just the way we do it with the buyback and the cost of ownership. Once you start getting out past two years, you start getting an extended warranties, have to buy tires, things like that, that get that annual cost of ownership up. And, you know, that we're just hard to beat that bill of 27,000 per creator per year. We did a little rough figuring on if we were to rent, you know, a motor creator. Looked at the price from one of the local outfits, same creator, or about the same amount of use that we use. Our creators on average, we'd be looking at like 90,000 a year per creator. So it's just a pretty good deal.
Oh, I'm confused here between the red and the green address. For some reason, the buyback on the cat is 44 two-year.
Basically, it's, I'm sorry, it's cost, so that your annual cost per.
So it's the.
Yeah.
So the red is.
Is cost.
So like if.
That's not what they're giving us.
No, no, the what they're giving us is the is the 225.
See, where John Deere gives the.
And okay.
And we tried to do the red, it's our cost, the green's revenue.
So, yeah, the red, so it's like the price of the new creator minus the two-year buyback divided by two.
So that kind of. And then you put it above a job that fuel and other things, but we're kind of assuming those would be somewhat equal.
If we went out, if it was true, if we went out to five here, it would be considerable than cap wins.
Mount Williams is close. 22,000 versus 45.
Yeah, cash, maybe that was the cost.
The same thing we have to add in extended warranty and add in, probably have to get some tires.
They've been sticking with two-year buyback on everything.
Yeah, yeah. And you can see that the cost, it's not a big cost difference that it works out to be. When you add those other things into that 22,000 a year, again, extended warranty plus tires, bait, you know, baiting things that you're going to end up having within that time, that two-year buyback is just hard to beat. And there's talks where that's eventually could go away, I don't like flydocks already kind of doing away with some of that. So whether we're going to be able to continue to do that, I don't know. But for right now, it's a pretty hard deal to beat.
Well, they got a market for those. Why is why not?
I'm not real sure.
As long as there continues to be a market for these machines.
Yeah.
They're going to.
I think so. But that seems to be the big difference is what each is able to do on a buyback level. Unless there's a better way to look at it, that I'm not aware of, is kind of our equivalent annual cost. That's what it is.
So basically, what you're telling us right now is of the cat made the John Deere. Would we be out of pocket, 27 grand versus 44 grand per unit per year?
Correct, yeah, correct. And it's an upfront today, we pay more today, we pay the what's the net cost, 305,000 compared to 172. But cost per year, if you figure the buyback in two years, the John Deere is like. It's tough because looking at it today, but. And I will say the guys, we have eight John Deeres. They tried the cats too, I think, as far as it compares to the machine, I think we take any worry. But they have been happy with the John Deeres, the hog has been good with their service, but we have no complaints.
What's your official recommendation?
My recommendation would be to stick with John Deere for another year. Go ahead of the. Purchase the four new graders from Hawnham and exercise the buyback on the other four that we have hundred, the two-year.
Fair enough. So I'll make that move. Oh, second, move the second it, further discussion. Oh, is it fair? All right. opposed? Motion pass.
Motion pass. Still have a trouble figuring over all the costs and the difference being what it is in two years. Because the buyback is the same.
But see, it's not, the buyback to two years, John Deere is offering 292, cat is offering 245.
Right. Yes, the cats offered 2.5.
Oh, okay, hold on, it's actually. A million one on all four, or 290, or 292.
Yes, that they're offering us $100,000. And please do, though, if we forecast the same thing, go talk to your bosses, your salespeople, if there's a better way they can sell us that we're missing something here. But I think it's a no-brainer way my cost per year. And then Ben couldn't argue with.
I.
Come on.
All right, thanks guys.
Yeah, truck, yeah, we don't.
There was a question on the trucks. We have, most issues we have are on the whole mechanical issue.
We have had several.
We were just, oh, we're talking about how this thing.
No, that was like, I thought we had further issues left before.
I'll say that most of the trouble has been issues related, missions, equipment, but we have that.
And that's, that's going to be a problem too.
Yeah, and I wrote, I do have a freight liner, a lot of trouble with.
Pretty. What's that? I have a freight liner, freight liner, so we've had quite a bit.
I mean, we didn't get up, we don't have any business for.
Questions, sorry, little Peterville. Okay. All right. Hi, Brian. Thank you. Next up, our county IT manager, Mike Connors, purchase agreement for our new telephone system.
Yeah, and this is about Google for its own system, and we just all go through a little bit of background for benefit of those that weren't involved in this. We've been hoping to replace the county phone system for the past several years, if not beyond that. The newest part of the system we have right now is 15 years old, with the older pieces being as much as 20 years old. During the last budget session, we all kind of came to the realization, we just had to replace it. The fakers and shrimp communities, it's just too much to tolerate anymore, and you can find parts for the system anymore. So during that budget session, we had become aware of a possibility that our industry plan funds, our funds, could possibly cover the cost over a certain time. So we budgeted 225,000 in the IT budget, to cover the cost of the new telephone system. Since then, we learned that our funds will cover the cost of the project. So hearing this out back on July 20th approved this our project. And at that time, the project was approved with a due not exceed amount of 225,000. So now the law enforcement center, which is always the strange creature in the bunch, requires some really specific hardware configurations to be functional and integrated with their operations in there. So we sought out some phone system vendors and believe they could meet those requirements. Two of them came up, one was High Point Networks offering a Mitele system, and the other was Black Box Corporation offering an AC system. Long story short, ultimately, Black Box was the only one that provided the hardware for the necessary interfaces. We're down to a single vendor, no really any way around that. So, so they were the final vendor that was selected, and we've been working with them back and forth to negotiate cost. The system and ended up with. A statement of work agreement with them that came to 223,657.84, which is about 1342.16 less than 225 maximum we came up with. And I guess I should note here too, that now if our fund's covering this, that that original 225, 225,000 that was in the IT budget, the county general thought was the fiscal year. So that being said, if there's any questions, I could certainly entertain those, or I would expect to ask the board to try and get fund approval so we can prove it.
Another question? Yeah, I guess, but certainly, just curious, I mean, when we talk about a phone system, what does that actually entail? Briefly describe it.
That amounts to the central core of the system. And telephones go along with it, it's basically what it is. This is a different system than we used before, and it's the way that everything is going. It's what's called an IP-based system, so it actually works for computer network lines rather than phone lines. And it's pretty much what everybody's doing nowadays, is the technology itself there, and this offers some advantages for cost savings. Like now, existing telephones which we have, we spend monthly bills to maintain lines between different pieces, and the switches are at different locations. For the design IP-based system, we already have network connectivity between all these facilities, so when we ride the traffic over that, all those lines go away. So there's a fair cost savings in the long run when it comes to that as well.
One of my questions, I believe. Lack of better term, extension lines, do we have all of them?
Yes.
Those all have to be rewired.
Actually, we've got most of that wiring done. It did, it did need some rewiring because there's some places we didn't have computer network cables, and it's like, we just all plug in the computer network now rather than phone line, so to speak. It's amazing, you know, everything anymore, it seems like everything you have has to be booted at one time or another, because it's a computer and not a physical device anymore. But, yeah, in the long run, this looks pretty attractive, if we can do, you know, at least two or three lines, I can think of off the top of my head, that are fairly pricey or random. For those, so. It's a substantial amount of money, but and the technology is a little bit different here because. Uh, it's a substantial amount of money, but, and, and the technology's a little bit different here because, because it's an IP-based system. We end up with the core of the system being located just in one place, because it is right now, we've got the telephones, which is scattered between all our facilities and they're all kind of married together.
Got, I got one more quick question. What type of warranty do we get with a new system?
Uh, well, typically, most of them are like a year, and then you pay for maintenance after that.
Yeah, that's it.
And that's pretty much it, yeah. So, uh, we end up being kind of managers of the systems who end up paying for support to help us when we get in trouble that we don't understand. So, uh, we've worked with, um, NEC systems before, and fast factor, the system we have now is an NEC system. And it's been a tough system, and it's lasted a long time, there's days, anything you like thrown out the window, but, uh, but all in all, it's been a very reliable system, it's been well, it's playing too old anymore than you would be.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Um, like the, replace these often-used phones, yeah, is that?
What's that?
Will we replace these often-used phones?
Yes.
Um, the, as far as the actual installation and all that, is that part of the professional services and support? Or do they actually contract out to have everything put in place, or do they just deliver it to you and say, go ahead, put it on?
Uh, no, they, um, they actually have an onsite. It's kind of sad to say because they have, they do have one key guy that works for them, and they've got a network of technicians here and there, but we've always had one that's working this down here on this system. And he's agreed to go ahead and do this one as well. Biggest portion of it, well, that's arguable, I guess, but, um, the programming and the initial system, they'll be doing all that. Um, after they're done with it, it's all set up the way we need to be, then we'll be maintaining it after that. The other part of it is just boots in the ground, unplugging phones and plugging new ones in. In fact, for a period of time, we're probably going to have two phones at each location as we make the transition. So, uh, it's enough desk space.
So this person will be available for a while, or is he from this area that?
He's, he's actually lives up near Billings, and, yeah, and, and he's not the only one they've got, they've got networks scattered all over the country. Uh, Black Box is a pretty big outfit, and there's been timing and he hasn't been available, just because we know him, you know, it's familiar, he can deal with the system down there. We've had to call him when he's in vacation or whatever, and they always come up with somebody within a couple of minutes that can answer our questions. It's not too often we bump into him, I mean, telephones are fairly basic, you know, what kind of they work, they work or they don't, and there's something appropriate in between, typically. So, uh, but sometimes we'll get into some strange things and strange territories when it comes to weird voicemail setups or things like that that we have to look for some guidance on. But all in all, it's, uh, we don't talk to him very often.
You said one year probably on the warranty and then, um, service charge or a maintenance fee. Is that any different than we are right now, is it much more significant, do we know?
Um, it's, I want to say it's, uh, I'll tell you what it is here, if I just click up a little bit or down. There's somewhere. Yeah, the first year maintenance, of course. There's a, there's something called software assurance that goes with everything anymore, it's a computer, right, it's not a phone system, it's a third computer. And that's included first year warranty and stuff like that, after that, it. It's not as small, so. But.
I guess just in parlaying into where we are today and what we're spending now.
Yeah, it's comparable to what we used to pay, the sad part is, is this switch is so old that they dropped it for maintenance, they wouldn't have maintained it with any kind of. Um, we couldn't pay them enough to maintain, someone's going to boil down to. And that is, I'm starting to sort of wonder.
I just wondered if that was comparable.
It is of what it used to be, so it looks like, um, the yearly support on that is probably going to run about fourteen thousand a year. And that's about what we're paying on the old system, when we did it before, they told us we couldn't anymore.
Okay.
Um, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to take the motion that we approve the agreement with Black Box Network Services or Chairwoman.
Second. Moving seconded.
I was going to say, I can just go ahead and sign like the other ones, because I still have to fill out the paperwork all with it, so it slows things down a lot. I, I mean, if you wanted to sign, you sure did.
Is it, is it calling for my signature?
No, it's just.
Authorize signature with a change your motion.
Yes, I'm taking my motion too, but Mike, we authorize to sign the agreement with, um, Black Box Network Services as presented.
I'm good with it.
Moving seconded, further discussion. Others in favor?
Hi.
Those motion carries.
Thank you so much, guys, now the work begins, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as it, I'll last my tenure here.
Oh, yeah. I did pull too long on this, so.
The store before it doesn't work anymore.
They've got a brand new coin now.
No.
Entertaining with their motion, unless we got anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I move adjourned.
Second.
Moving second adjourned. If you're scared, others in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Aye, all right.
Now, here to me.
Have a good one.
Thanks.
We convene on, we know what we convene on next Tuesday. We are convening next Tuesday, guys, for a little bit. I want to discuss some finalizing our comments on the travel language of the plan. And some odds and ends.
Brian's trucks.
Other, yeah, we're gonna open ours. Don't trust the drivers.
And then.
Yeah. I have a lower monthly payment. Imagine that, that's going to be a problem, that they have more. We know that, but.
And you're gonna put that.
And all that, so, yeah.
Okay, I'll give all this.
Okay. We need to have it as soon as we possibly can.
I'll put that on the agenda for Tuesday.
We have, you guys have a secretary?
Molly Norberg on Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, there's this.